Okay, first on the agenda is systems communication and we have had one person sign up to speak. Ms. Emily Garcia. Yes, please.
Hello, I was just, um, sorry, I'm really nervous, I'm like, eh, I don't like, I don't like speaking in front of everyone and stuff. I get nervous like this in church and I do this a lot, every Sunday with it. I was just here to speak regards of all the kids and stuff. I know I've been dealing with, with the dress code right now with my son and stuff, with the whole shaving thing. I think that these young men should not be forced to shave. I think just the way these young ladies have an option to put on makeup and come to school this way. I think these young men should have an option if they want to shave or not. I don't think this is, what is it? The board's member, they shouldn't take control of this. I think it's, it should be up to the parents and the students. And I don't think that these young men at 14, 15, like, they shouldn't be shaving. I think if they want to, then go ahead, you know? But I think that we should give them a choice, just the way God gave us a choice to be saved or not saved, you know? I think that we should let these young men be young men, they get excited. My son's so excited with his facial hair, he's like, "Look at this," and it's not even nothing, it's a little peach fuzz. And I'm there telling him to shave and I've been, I wrote something, my pastor wrote something and everything like that. But I was like, "You know what, I need to speak up for the other students that are dealing with this and they're being forced to shave and this is not okay." I think this is at, up to the parents, up to the kids if they want to or not. I think they should have a choice, just the way you guys have a choice to have your, I think, your, you know, your beard, your mustache and stuff. As long as you maintain it and it's not out of control, I think that these young men deserve to have this choice, just the way these young ladies have a choice to wear makeup or not makeup. I don't like to wear makeup, so, so I just think that y'all, please, like, consider, like, letting these young men have these choices. Because I know that I, you know, I posted online and stuff, I know there's other parents, they didn't show up. So, you know, I'm up here fighting for these by myself, but hopefully y'all consider just, please, like, letting these young men have a choice. I understand y'all don't want it all wild and stuff, but just for them to maintain it, you know, looking nice and stuff. You see these young ladies that pile on makeup at school and, you know, my kids come, they're like, "Mom, why do these girls get to wear makeup?" And they look like crazy, like, it's just so much makeup, you know, like, I was like, "And they don't let me have a little bit of hair." Which, I was like, "That's not, that's not fair." Which, I get it, life is not fair, right? But I think that since y'all are giving these young ladies choices to wear makeup or not, I think that these young men should have a choice and they should be able to speak up and be able to say if they want their facial hair or not. And I know right now, my son, as, as being Christian and stuff, we don't, we, we don't believe in him shaving at this age until he's 16 and then to, and when he's 16, he has a choice. We're gonna give him that choice. You know what, Orlando, do you want to shave or you not? Then that's fine, that's his choice. We always gave him choices. He has a contrapleasia, he has a dorsism. We gave him a choice with having shots hormones for him to grow more. You know, he's a little person, we gave him that choice. You know, he's a young man, he's a smart young man. And we sat down with him and we told him, "Hey, do you want to take these hormones?" He's like, "No, Mom, God made me this way and I'm gonna stay this way. I'm happy the way that I am." You see, he, he had a choice. And I love to give my kids those choices and I think they should be able to, to express themselves through their, you know, "How are you guys?" You know, "Y'all are well groomed" and stuff like that, it's not wild and stuff. And I think that these young men should have a choice. And I'm sorry for rambling on and stuff. I know I had stuff written down and I just want them just to have a choice, just the way these young ladies have a choice with, you know, wearing makeup and stuff. And I know these, you know, there's other young men that have long hair and stuff and they keep it well groomed and, you know, and stuff like that. I think that they should have a choice as well. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Okay, we have an action item to take care of first before we go into our regular business and that is to, to approve the annual financial audit report. And Mr. Dusty Ruth is our...
I'm Dusty, I'm from Coleman Horton &amp; Company and we provided the school district with its annual financial audit report for the year in June 30th, 2022. Do y'all have this little report with you? And going through it, I'll be pretty brief. If you have any questions out the process, let me know, we can go over it. Starting on pages four through six of the audit report. This is our opinion letter on the audit. Briefly, it specifies that we audit the district's final statements and, and it's your responsibility for the final statements. Our responsibility is to provide the opinion on those statements. And on page four, the second paragraph is our opinion. And the final statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the government activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Divine Independent School District as of June 30th, 2022. This is known as an unmodified or clean opinion and it's the highest level of assurance an auditor may express on a set of financial statements. We didn't have any findings on this audit and everything looked good on your books. Moving forward, I think we're just gonna go over the fund statements on page seven. This shows your breakdown, your general fund, your other funds and your total funds. So, your general fund for the year, you have a total revenue of $19 million, $19 million, 129, 910. About three quarters way down, your total expenditures are $20,861,422. So, a decrease of 1.7 million. You have other financing sources of the right to use lease assets, $81,427. And you also had 1.4 million come in for the insurance proceeds. So, your net change of fund balance for the year was a decrease of $168,743, leaving the general fund, the ending fund balance of $2 million, $167,790. Your other, your other funds there have a total revenues of 5.5 million. Expenditures of 4.7 million. So, a total increase of $394,548 for the year. The original was with the ending fund balance of 1.7 million, $78,000. And including those other funds is the, mainly your food service fund had a $625,000 fund balance. Your capture's activity funds had a $240,000 fund balance. And your debt service had $910,000 fund balance. Just, um, the, only other thing I probably really wanna go over is on page 49, it says your budget on page 49. It shows your original and final budgets for the year. Your total revenues were originally budgeted $20,430,000. Your final budget was $19 million, 136,629. And the actual revenue for the year is $19 million, 129,910. So, it's pretty close to what your final budget was. About three quarters way down, your total expenditures for the year. And those total expenditures, your final budget is $21 million, 468,063. And your final actual numbers were $20,861,422. So, there were, there's some excess there for your total expenses. And you did have one budget over expenditure on function 81, the facilities, acquisition and construction. And that was mainly because we, we put the accounts table there at the end of the year. And that was done after the budget was right, my money. On page 67 to 68 is the last schedule I want to go over. This is your total, your schedule of the income tax receivable. So, on page 68, 68 there, your beginning balance was $857,358. Your current year levy for your property taxes is $61,489,248. Your maintenance collections was $4 million, 953. Your debt service collections was $1 million, 632,340. Adjustments of $64,000. So, your ending balance there for your property tax receivable is $996,951. That's what everybody in the district owes the school for the property taxes as of 6/30/2022. And that was the final, I want to go over it. If I have any questions on anything else in the audit report, just let me know, we will go over it.
Looks good, another good report. Our thanks to you and to Shannon for all of her hard work, keep this good. Okay, we appreciate it, thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, we need a motion to approve the financial audit.
Madam President, I move to approve the annual financial audit report as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Carl and a second by Chris to approve the annual financial audit. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Next, we want to consider and take possible action to approve Coleman Horton &amp; Company 2020, 2022 and 2023 contract. It's Shannon.
Hi, good evening. We've used Coleman Horton for a few years now and we appreciate their help when there's a question or need to ask me. They're just an email or phone call away. And so, at this time, we'd like to continue working with them.
Anybody have any questions to Shannon? You know how many years we've used her?
No, we should, but I thought it was way before me.
Yeah, it's been a while, I know it's been a while. Because I think even...
J.C. had them and Debbie's.
I think it's before, around, at least around the time I came on the board, if not before that, so, it's been a while. Okay, let's have a motion if we want to approve this recommendation.
Madam President, I move to approve Coleman Horton &amp; Company LLP for the 22, 23 contract for their 2023 contract.
Okay, I have a motion by Carl and a second by Carrie to approve Coleman Horton &amp; Company as the 2022, 23 contract. All in favor, raise your right hand. If that passes 5-0, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dusty. You're free to go. Okay, next we have our Divine High School Campus Principal's presentation.
Oh, howdy. And, okay, so Todd told me I have about two minutes, but I probably have a lot more to, so a little bit more than two minutes, but I won't keep you very long. A lot of good things going on at the high school. A lot of it's gonna be in the board notes that I've already provided to you, just so you know. But our enrollment is up by about 8% from the end of last year with about 584 students. I think it's 583 now. But 584, our tenant rate is 95.71% since the first day of school. If you look at last week, Monday, well, it was the week of September 5th, it was 93.96. So, not bad, we're doing pretty good. We just had our first progress report. So, campus-wide, we have about 64% of our students are passing all their classes. So, we're sitting at about 36% have at least one failure. So, we're, our freshman class probably where our most need is. So, we have about 69 out of 157 that have at least one failure. About, that's about 43.9%. Softwares, it's about 45 out of 143, so about 31%. Juniors is 47 out of 145, 32%. Seniors, about 49 out of 138, which is about 35.5%. Now, some of that, we think we can attribute to how we're really enforcing the grading policy or the grading practices that we have. One of those grading practices is, is due by the due date. And so, we're trying to hold kids accountable for making sure that the assignments we give them and so forth, they turn them in on time. So, you get full credit on that first day. If it's three days after that that they turn it in, they can get up to a 70. After that, they can earn up to a 50, up to the last Wednesday of the six weeks. So, that's the grading policy that, or practice that we're having with the students right now. So, some of it's a bit of an adjustment, especially for the students that are coming up from the middle school. So, they're having to adjust to having to mature a little bit and grow up and be accountable for what we're holding them responsible for. So, that's part of that process. On the good news side, dual credit, as I've talked about before, we have a total of 85 students that are enrolled in dual credit. Two of those students are in arts, 1301. Forty-five students are in English, 1301. Twenty-seven students are enrolled in English, 23. Twenty-two, 39 students in government, 2305. Forty-one students in history, 1301. And we have a student enrolled in math, 1314. And we have about four students enrolled in speech, 1315. Like I said, you know, through that, the students have invested themselves, $12,050. We've invested our part and Divine Educational Foundation has invested money as well. So, we're well set for that. And really where that's gonna help us out, it's gonna help us out with college and career, college, career, military readiness, right? It's the area of student achievement that's very important to us and our students are gonna demonstrate that by meeting the TSI criteria before enrolling in economics, ELAR and mathematics for dual credit. It's very important that we do better in dual credit because when you look at our dual credit prior to, and you look at the TSI, our students were at 41.8% for ELA and they're at 21.9% for math. When you look at ELA, that's 16% less than the state with ELA. With math, we're off by 24% from the state. So, we really have some work to do preparing our students to be college-ready, right? And when I go over some additional scores in a minute, you'll see what I'm talking about. But our students are not ready for college. And so, the TSI, you know, I hate to say it, but it's sort of a gatekeeper, right? They have to pass the TSI before they can get into their regular college courses. So, that's why it's so important that we're doing this. We will be giving a TSI tentatively, hopefully in November. It'll be a first one, it's the first time we're trying to do it this early to give access to students to do this so they can have the opportunity to pass. When you're talking about STAR, now I wanna get into STAR. STAR is gonna become very important too. So, for the high school, we have a simulation coming up on November 14th, November 16th, November 17th. On the 14th, we're gonna do Algebra I. On the 16th, we're gonna do English I and II. And on the 17th, we're gonna do Biology and U.S. History. So, we're gonna do this completely online because that's what STAR is gonna go to in the spring semester. It's gonna be completely online. And the thing about this is at least a minimum of 25% of the questions are gonna be interactive questions. So, that's new, that's called STAR redesign 2.0. With that STAR redesign, there's gonna be questions like constructive responses. These are short answers. And for example, social studies, they're gonna require 250 characters. So, a student has to respond to that question with 250 characters of writing. They're gonna have drag and drop, which is sort of like matching. But it's gonna be on the computer where they have to have a drop-down menu and they're gonna have to select the answer that goes in there. They're gonna have graphing in math. They're gonna have something called hotspots where they have diagrams and they're gonna have to pick what the correct answer is off those hotspots. And then they're gonna have what they call inline text, which is sort of like fill in the blanks. So, this, the fact that this test is going all online, the fact that they've designed a minimum of 25% of those questions have to be interactive, then it's necessary for us to do this simulation in November. So, it's just gonna be just like a STAR test. We're gonna shut down the school, we're gonna be all testing, we're gonna do it online. It's gonna give us an opportunity to look at our technology, see what technology needs we have and give us a chance to test out our network, make sure our network is working appropriately. And then it's gonna give us the data on the student about where they are so we can begin to prep them or prepare the types of lessons we need to do for them to be successful. And so, why is this very important? As a district, we do, we do a good job, right? So, when you look at Algebra I, for example, 82% of our kids pass the test, okay? That's approaches are high, right? But only 19% are prepared to go to college. Only 19% are at master's level. When you look at biology, 91% of our kids pass the test, that's great. But only 15% could be successful at the secondary level, at the post-secondary level. English I, 78% passed the test, so only 11% mastered it. English II, 81% passed the test, but only 3% mastered it. When I was talking to my juniors today, I was like, or the other day, I was like, "Are you serious? Only 3% of you know how to actually construct a sentence in the English language?" Because that's what that's telling you. You're not prepared to be successful when you go to college. U.S. History is. U.S. History is a celebration. We almost had 100% pass the test. They brought us recognition from the state. And so, and with their mastery, they're at 52%. So, U.S. History has done an amazing job, those guys over there. So, that's a celebration right there. But in our other subjects, we really have a lot of work to do to make our students, again, post-secondary, ready. So, how are we addressing that? We're addressing that by number one, we started a process called understanding by design. So, that means start with the ending mind, right? So, we wanna look at the units and what's supposed to be covered. Our guarantee of viable curriculum is TEACH resources. So, we look at TEACH resources and we look at what the units are and what we're supposed to be delivering. When we do that, then we write the assessments. Because the assessments should then be asking the questions that we want the kids to know. What material do we want them to master? Once we have the assessments in place, then we start to write the activities and the materials and everything else that can go into our lesson plans and we start designing our learning objectives. So, that's where we started in the summer. To make that possible, we instituted professional learning communities, PLCs. So, what we had to do, we had to carve out more time for the teachers to have time every day to meet as a department so that they could begin working collegially, right? Collaboratively with each other to develop their lesson plans and their assessments and what have you, to work with this understanding by design process. Since we've done that, I think we've done, you know, a very good job. We have best practices that are being delivered by our instructional specialist, Nadia Suleika. We do it on a three-to-four week basis. We, as administrators, are then looking for these best practices daily through five-minute snapshot walkthroughs or 15-minute comprehensive walkthroughs that we're documenting in stride. So, we start the whole process with asking the teachers, as they do the lesson plans, to have their lesson plans posted outside their door by 8:00 a.m., the first instructional day of every week. So, something that they're, they're not necessarily used to doing, right? But we have them posted, so when we, as administrators, go to their rooms, we can take their lesson plans and we can walk into the classrooms and we can look to see, do their learning objectives, are their activities and materials, are they aligned with what they say they're, they're doing in the classroom? Now, there's flexibility there because sometimes they might be a day behind or two days behind or what have you. But at least we're able to see what they're supposed to be teaching and whether or not that's occurring in the classroom. So, some of the look fours that we have are learning objectives. And so, the, in your board notes that I send you, you have some copies of some statements that folks made while looking at the learning objectives. You know, and one of the statements was, "The objective PD helped me refine my objective writing. I feel like after this PD, I give more thought to the action verb that reflects what I want the students to learn and make sure that I can truly measure and assess that the student has mastered the objectives." One of my favorite, most helpful PDs so far. That's why this might as well ran by L. Garcia. So, again, Ms. Suleika is going to these classrooms and every three weeks, like, for example, this week, we delivered material on gradual release. But as administrators, we're going into the rooms looking for bell-to-bell instruction. We're also looking for learning objectives as well. But we've already delivered the PD on bell-to-bell instruction, so we're looking for it now. Now, we've given them reading material for gradual release. Next week, we'll give PD on gradual release. We'll write a reflection on bell-to-bell. Then the following week, we'll be looking for gradual release and then we'll go into the next PD. So, our teachers are receiving PD, professional development, every three to four weeks on professional practices that should help to increase the rigor in the classroom and allow the students to get a more robust educational experience and give them that opportunity to, to do better, right? And for example, like bell-to-bell instruction. This bell-to-bell obligation means that we must provide all students with a constructive learning activity at all times. This includes preventing idle time by providing early finisher activities. It also includes efficient transitions from one activity to another. So, when you're saying, you know, "Why is that important?" Well, we're starting to do the gradual release process, right? And with the gradual release process, what you wanna do is you're able to differentiate. So, instead, what I'm trying to get them to do is get away from worksheets. Stop letting worksheets drive your instruction. Because when it's a worksheet on the table and kid finishes the worksheet like I'm done. Now, if I give them another one, now I'm punishing the kid, right? For finishing early. But instead, if I do a gradual release process where I put five problems on the board and everybody's working the same five problems and I've got some kids who finish early and I say to those kids, "Okay, go check, I need you to go check their work, I need you to go check their work." And I continue to work with the ones who are struggling, right? Then when they finish and they've checked their work and everybody's closer, now I put another five problems on the board. Now, I'm not punishing anybody, right? And I've been, now I'm gonna increase the rigor of those five problems, right? So, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna start giving that stretch, right? And then one or two of the ones that finished earlier, they might finish again. Hey, go help so-and-so, go help so-and-so. I'm gonna go around and check and after I do that, I'll put another five problems on the board. So, I'm continuously moving, I'm gonna have bell-to-bell instruction from minute one to minute 45. I'm gonna continue to do these things. Are the teachers perfect at all this? Not yet, okay? And it's gonna take time. But this is a process that we're gonna go through and we're gonna expose them through a lot, to a lot of this professional development so we can, again, up the rigor. Because the whole goal for this year, not just to pass the STAR test, we want to master the STAR test, okay? I remember for my sons, when my sons came home, we didn't look at the test card and go, "Oh, you made, you made approaches, oh, good for you." No, it wasn't, you mastered the material. And so, all of our students, not just our, not just the sons and daughters of our teachers or our folks, it needs to be for everybody. We need to be mastering the material. So, that's our goal, that's what we're working towards. And that's just some of the highlights that we're doing. Safety-wise, I think we're doing a great job, safety-wise. Got about 95% of the students wearing their IDs now, their badges. So, we're able to identify all the students on campus, working on our, our door checks and all that kind of stuff. So, I think, you know, we're doing a good job, really proud of my administrative team, all the work we've done so far to this point and hopefully we'll continue to do a good job.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, we move into our administrative reports and first is Dr. Van Jean.
God, I gotta follow him.
Yeah.
All right. So, our board priority one, increase student success, continue a tradition of student achievement. As Mr. Gonzalez was stating earlier, our new partnership with Palo Alto College has been created. This has been a very good transition for us, it was pretty seamless. I see, I believe, haven't had any problems going back and forth. Kiddos are, are enjoying registered for their classes. We had a recap meeting with Region 20 to kind of refresh our CTE audit and our review. Mr. Gonzalez and Shannon sat in on that meeting last week. And so, they're gonna be coming back, kind of laid out the groundwork for us to, to get a good handle on, a lot of the, the CTE stuff that we're having to do falls under the career and college readiness measures also. And some of the kiddos that don't necessarily go the route or take the category of dual credit, we'll be focusing more on CTE and we need to make sure that, you know, we've got stuff that they're interested in and stuff that is gonna be helpful for workforce employment whenever our kids are leaving. I've heard some pretty good things about the EMT class. There was a mom that came and visited today, actually, from a different organization and her kiddo, she was coming about a different, different project and she said, "Oh, yeah, my stepdaughter's in the EMT program." Said, she came home the other day and was saying something, "You know what? And now I can do forensics and I can do this." And she's like, wasn't even the same kid that was coming home like the last three years that kind of has really sparked the fire in her, so that, we're excited about that. And so, we look for more programs that we can put together for, in that, in that category. Still two teachers short at the high school. Kind of, they've made adjustments to, to fill that. We've got a, a math teacher that, that, a spot that we could use and a science teacher. They're getting by without any struggles, I believe, at this point in time. It would just help with the PLC project that Mr. Gonzalez has going on. We have our continued campus, campus safety visits. Mr. Wendell and I go and visit other campuses.